Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. I have a meeting announcement. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the City Channel and live stream on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. Will the clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Yeah.
Mr. Rossberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we join from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our next order of business is proclamation, so we have one from Councilman O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam President.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1233. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Coach Charlie Bougarite for his thirty-five years of commitment and dedication to the students he has taught and athletes he has coached at Penn Hills High School. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, March first, two thousand twenty-one to be Coach Charlie Bougarite Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you wanted to add, Councilman, and now we have a proclamation is proven. Now we have one for Councilman Wilson and Councilman Kraus.
Councilman Wilson and Councilman Kraus present. Whereas pet ownership in the United States of America has more than tripled since the nineteen seventies and as of two thousand and twenty-one, pets provide companionship to more than eighty-five million American households. And whereas this year marks the twenty-seventh annual World Spay Day and since inception, participants have spayed and saved millions of animals nationwide and hundreds of thousands in the Pittsburgh region. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declares Tuesday, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, World Spay Day here in our most livable city of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And Councilman Kraus and Councilman O'Connor?
We have speakers here that wish to address the pro- Councilman Wilson?
Yes, that'd be great. Not sure how we do this. I imagine they're already on is, um, let's see here.
Carol Way.
There's Dan Rossi is here.
And Ross, Kaylee.
All right, there must be my other screen then. Okay. Well, if they're, if they're available to say some words, that'd be great.
I'd like to say just a brief few words. I'm Dan Rossi, CEO of Humane Animal Rescue. You know, we've been a proud partner along with Animal Friends with the City Spay and Neuter Program for many years. This is, you know, I have to congratulate the city and the council for keeping this service available to the City of Pittsburgh residents. It is very unique. This is something that you don't see across the country and as we know is so very important out there. You know, over the years, Animal Friends and Humane Animal Rescue has done over four thousand free spay and neuters through this program for the City of Pittsburgh residents. And, you know, beyond that, our services go way beyond just those spay and neuters for the city. I could tell you during COVID last year, which was very difficult to provide services, Humane Animal Rescue did six thousand five hundred twenty spay and neuters as well as all of our other services. Again, during a time where our vets, our vet techs are doing things remotely, our vet techs are going out to parking lots, getting these animals from people's cars in snow and rain and heat for the most part. So, you know, I wanna just do a shout out to the staff at Humane Animal Rescue for continuing this program and keeping things moving along. And also to thank the councilmen and the city for continuing to fund this important effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Kelly? You're on mute, Kelly.
It's okay. We all do it. I think maybe an issue with your microphone, actually. I don't see the mute.
We'll come back to Kelly. We'll come back to Kelly because we can't hear. It's now connecting to audio.
It says connecting to audio.
Now it's connected. Now unmute yourself, please.
Yep.
Okay, I apologize about that. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
So I just wanna say thank you to City Council for giving us this opportunity.
There's a lot of feedback, earphones probably.
Are you getting feedback? I apologize.
Okay.
I just wanna say thank you so much for this opportunity. Not only does this program promote spay and neuter, but it also encourages pet owners that may not realize that rabies vaccines and dog licenses are required in the City of Pittsburgh. And I just really wanna share that with each and every one of you that not only does it help spay and neuter, but it also raises awareness promotes dog licensing, rabies vaccine, as well as spay and neuter. And Animal Friends has spayed and neutered over two thousand three hundred animals through the city program in the past seven years. So we really hope this program is gonna continue and we can't thank you enough for this opportunity year after year.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And I just wanna say thanks to Dan and Kaylee and also Councilman Kraus for being a sponsor in this proclamation. And also Animal Friends for, for really reaching out and, and just make me aware of how important this is. And then also just recognizing that it's a really humane method to control the animal overpopulation or city.
Yeah, and it's the responsible thing to do, right? You know, it'd be, you know, adoption first, always first, choice always, and then always to spay and neuter. And I'll, I will definitely chime in on the much deserved praise of Dan and the work that happens at Humane Animal Rescue. If you haven't visited in a while, take a an opportunity to go over and see the amazing work that they do. And we could not, we could not do it without them. So Dan and Kaylee, thank you, and everybody at Humane Animal Rescue. Much appreciated.
Any of the members are always welcome to tour. Just send me an email. Give me a call. We'd love to have you over at any time.
Thanks, Dan, so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you all for your work too. Microphone issue. And now, do we have someone else?
Ben and President, it's me, Rev. Is Dan still on the line?
Yes.
Uh, I think we just, yeah, there he is, Councilman.
Hey, Dan. Dan Rossi, can you hear me? No, that's okay.
Yes, I can.
Tell, tell everybody where your, um, your flagship headquarters building is at, please?
It is in Homewood. You know, we, we had the option to go really anywhere in the City of Pittsburgh and even outside of the City of Pittsburgh, anywhere in Allegheny County. And we saw our future, our bright future, to have our headquarters located in Homewood. And we love it here. You know, it's a great spot. Thanks to Ricky, we see changes happening here daily, weekly. And if you have not been to Homewood lately, come check us out. There's some great coffee shops here now. It's, it's a safe place to come and hang out.
Thank you, Dan. The Animal Rescue League has a special place in my heart. Not only is it Homewood, it is across the street from my, um, my father's house and the house I grew up in. And so I looked at that space every day of my life and, and of course still live around the corner. So we're, we're proud to have you as neighbors and the work you've done has just been tremendous. And you have, you've been part of this rebuilding of Homewood. And because of your investment first, we've been able to build houses around you and now start to rebuild the economy. And so your courage and your board's courage to invest in Homewood before everyone else has caused all these other things to happen. And it's a direct, direct correlation to your own vision, courage, and then of course, commitment to your work. So love you, Dan. You know that already.
Yes.
I can't wait to see it too, but I guess Reverend would have to invite us over to his house so we can get a view of it.
Yeah. It's like two blocks from my house. Two, three blocks from my house.
Anyway, congratulations, everyone. Thank you for your work. And now we have our will of counsel with Councilwoman O'Connor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. This is actually, this is a will that we jointly are doing with the mayor's office and a group with the Clemente Museum. So you can just read it and then we'll, we'll pass hopefully. Thanks.
Madam Clerk.
Just the, the last paragraph's perfect.
Okay, Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1235. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby urge the Secretary of the United States Department of the Interior to recognize the historical designation of Roberto Clemente's place of birth in Luisa, Puerto Rico by adding it to the National Register of Historical Places.
Three, is there, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilman O'Connor, did you wanna say something?
No, I just wanna thank the administration and the organization to get, getting in touch with everybody to do this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And we have a will of counsel from Councilwoman Strasburg. Councilwoman Strasburg?
This is about rare disease awareness and Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first and then the last two clauses. That would be fantastic.
Okay. Okay. Councilwoman Strasburger presents, whereas a rare disease day seeks to raise public awareness of rare diseases, mobilize public action and urge elected officials and nonprofit organizations to allocate research and funds to the many rare diseases that many patients live with. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby call on the members of the Pennsylvania General Assembly to use state funds to combat the many rare diseases that our communities face. And be it further resolved that a copy of this will of counsel shall be sent to the Allegheny County Delegation of the Pennsylvania State House and Senate, the chairs and minority chairs of the State House and Senate Public Health Committees, Governor Tom Wolf and Pennsylvania Acting Secretary of Health Allison Bean.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, count, thank you, everyone. Councilwoman, did you wanna add anything to this?
I have nothing to add. I hope that our invited guest will be able to speak more to this at public comment.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you very much. And with that said, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is public comment. Read the rules of counsel here, sorry. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of counsel state that comments are limited to matters or of concern, official action or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Maybe have this, neither will threats. Maybe we have the first speaker, please.
Lindsey Passadellas.
Lindsey? I don't see Lindsey. Do you see Lindsey? I don't see Lindsey. Next speaker.
The second speaker is Jam Hammond.
Jam? Good morning.
Good morning. Are you ready for me?
Yes.
Okay. So dear members of council, I'm here as the Director of the Commission on Human Relations and also as your constituent. This is my last appeal to you on the behalf of Black, Brown, and all civil rights to leave the Crown Act intact. In a recent Post Gazette article, the Mayor's Director of Communications referred to the Pittsburgh's Crown Act as watered down, untrue. The current act is a brave, powerful law that protects Pittsburghers from discrimination based on their hair presentation. As Director of Human Resources Janet Manuel reminded us, Crown stands for creating a respectful and open world for natural hair. The attempt to remove the term other forms of hair presentation creates anything but respect and openness. Councilperson Burgess warned us of the evils of implicit bias that desperately affect people of color. Hair discrimination is a legacy of implicit bias that Pittsburgh has begun to destroy. Women and racial, religious, and ethnic minorities have had to moderate their body hair to gain acceptance despite their natural biology. The councilperson from my district proved that feelings of implicit bias against body hair still run deep, stating, "I don't know quite what word to put on it. Some people grow beards. For me, they're sloppy." So long as we allow people to judge others in a split second based on their natural, cultural appearance, Black, Brown, and all people will suffer at the hands of discrimination. Discussion has been fixated on the Pittsburgh's Bureau of Police, but one employer in our city. For the law to bend to meet a single entity is unjust. All just jurisdictional entities in our city must be held to the same standard. A person's value cannot be determined by their hair presentation or any other protected trait. We must value people based on their characters and contributions to society. Hair discrimination and housing applications, hiring practices, and public places allows implicit bias to again harm Black, Brown, and all people in our city. City Council and the Office of the Mayor have the courage and insight to protect us. I ask you to continue the protection and not take a step back, dragging our city with you. Finally, I am not just the Director of your Civil Rights Agency urging you to protect the city from discrimination. I am also your constituent. Having passed a law that states that you value hair, please value my hair and do not segregate me for it. Continue to protect me, your Black, Brown, trans, male constituent, from discrimination and implicit bias the same as you have protected my cis and female counterparts. Value me and people like me for the content of our characters, not our biological, natural, inalienable traits.
Thank you, Jim. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Matthew Feinman.
Thank you. Members of the council, my name is Matthew Feinman, and I'm here today to comment on the ongoing discussion of eviction moratoriums. First and foremost, let me start by saying that I too am a tenant. I'm not a homeowner, nor do I have investment property. However, I am an attorney who represents both landlords and tenants. The majority of my landlord clients are not corporations who own fifty or a hundred or a thousand apartment homes. Most of them own one, two, sometimes up to five. Some of them inherited the home. Some of them are testing the waters with their first property. The income from their tenants is what pays the mortgage and taxes on the house and is not their primary source of income. Many of you have been discussing eviction moratoriums, but most of the plans do not help landlords. Too often when these plans are put in place, lawmakers look at landlords as giant corporations. If a corporate landlord with a thousand apartments has fifty or a hundred tenants who default for six months, it won't hurt their bottom line. It might hurt their bottom line, but it won't bankrupt them. If a landlord with one or two properties has those one or two tenants default for six months, it could push that landlord into foreclosure or bankruptcy. Owning investment property should not be a cause for punishment. We should encourage people to invest their money and not put up roadblocks to stop them from generating income. Currently, too many magistrates seem to be handing out the CDC moratorium paperwork to nearly everyone who walks into court. And evictions that should be going through are being pushed off for months. There are also supposed, also supposed to be mechanisms in place to challenge these moratorium applications, but neither the courts nor the DA are hearing these challenges. And unlike an appeal to county court, with the CDC form filled out and a stay in place by a magistrate, the tenants do not have to put their rent in escrow. For example, let's say a tenant saves their unpaid rent for six months, then moves out without informing the landlord and does not provide a forwarding address. They have the funds to have, to find a new home while the landlord is stuck with an uncollectible bill. To conclude, eviction moratoriums, when done correctly and fairly, are extremely important. It should be in place and, and are extremely beneficial to the community. However, there must be protections in place for both sides, whether financial or legal remedies or both. Just a blanket moratorium will be irreparably harmful to fifty percent of the landlord tenant equation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ikona Halmaquina.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Grand rising to you. My title is Ikona Halmaquina, the Grand Inca, the Air Quack Confederacy of Aboriginal and American People. Last week, I asked a very relevant question. What would compel you to take action? Well, if I may, I would like to speak constitutionally and say that it should be the voice of the people that compels each of you to take action. For it is your job and your duty and your sworn oath to do so, to serve and protect, to uphold the Constitution, to support, protect, and defend the Constitution. Let me remind you, that includes Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, and Excluding Indians Not Tax. Again mentioned in Article Fourteen, Section Two, and I quote, "And excluding Indians Not Tax," end quote. According to Bouvier's Law Dictionary, eighteen fifty-six, adapted to the Constitution, feel free to look it up, and reference the word Indian in their definitions in dictionary section, the Aboriginals are so-called. And so, since that is true, you must acknowledge that we are the Aborigines. And you also must ask yourself, why would they mention Aborigines if there were not any Aborigines for the United States to consider? Your ignorance of the law is no excuse. So where does that bring us today? The corporate-for-profit municipality slash organization company called the City of Pittsburgh has been ignoring and downplaying and blatantly discarding our identity, impeding on the rights of Aboriginal and American people. We are here and we request that you take immediate action to remedy things. A lot of depredations and ill-conceived policies inflicted upon my people that need redress, such as forced assimilation. Respect our rights to travel, respect our culture, respect our jurisdiction, also return our sacred lands and resources. We have identified land that we have the desire to reclaim. We have also educational programs for the youth to reconnect them and to heal them from the trauma inflicted upon the system of oppression. What side of the law will you stand on? Or will you cower in the shadows of deceit? Be honorable. Use your utmost good faith. I have a vision for the city. And we will share that vision continuously on these lines, on the record, and via your emails. So check your inboxes. Please do respond and reply to us, for the Confederacy has been taking up the mantle of providing shelter and feeding your citizens. And.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kotakibey.
Greetings. This is Kotakibey, the Air Quack Confederacy of Aboriginal and American People. I just wanna send a reminder to City Council and all those that Aboriginal people are still here in America. We are not extinct. There's a lot of people wanna state, and I do wanna bring to the attention of Article Twenty of the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. And we're tasked with carrying out these lawful orders and agreements as agreed upon by the Organization of American States, which includes the United States. And to remind everyone of also our rights enshrined in the Constitution for the United States of America, which is our rights of association, assembly, and freedom of expression and thought. Now people have the rights of association, assembly, organization, expression, and entitled to exercise these rights without any interference in accordance, among other things, with our Cosmo Vision values, uses, customs, cultural practices. Our people also, in particular, those who are divided by borders, also have the right to travel unmolestedly. And it's high time that all these municipalities, government officials acknowledge our rights as enshrined within the Constitution that everyone took an oath to uphold, to support, protect, and defend either upon entry to this country or upon the offices and duties that they hold. We have a right to autonomy or self-government, and our people exercising our right to self-determination have the right to autonomy or self-government in matters relating to our affairs as well as the affairs that affect our land, resources, and people. And we strongly advise City Council and the members of the City of Pittsburgh to continue our meetings and our talks, which we have already started and initiated and engaged into with some of those members, to keep moving forward, to work together to strengthen our government-to-government relationship as provided for in Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, the Commerce Clause of the Constitution, and Excluding Indians Not Tax, as well as other acts of Congress that have acknowledged this, such as House Congress Resolution Three Thirty-One, Senate Congress Resolution Seventy. That being stated, I look forward to continuing our meetings with each and every one of you as we move forward in two thousand twenty-one and move forward towards the realization of all of our rights and goals as established in the Constitution, several treaties that have been signed by both of our ancestors. With that being said, I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you for your time. Now you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Mel Packer.
Okay, I'll unmute myself.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. This is Mel Pack from Point Breeze. I join you this morning with a simple ask for this council, and that is for you to immediately, by any means necessary, put in place a moratorium on resident evictions. It is no secret, it should be known whole, as it is to most to stay informed of pandemic relief plans, that hundreds of millions of dollars are in the pipeline from the federal government to local municipalities to fund rent arrears. You have nothing to lose but everything to gain. As I read this to you, landlords have prepared and are preparing eviction notices by the thousands in Allegheny County, including in the City of Pittsburgh. Landlords were actually gained by waiting, as the coming federal funds will likely make money, if not most, many, if not most of them whole, but greed has become their driver. In the absence of an immediate moratorium, hundreds of families may be forced into the streets and/or into shelters. Is our city prepared to deal with that? Are we buying or renting hotels to house those who will become homeless through no fault of their own? Are we prepared to feed and house the children suddenly thrust into cold streets? It's not just an economic issue, one of dollars owed and dollars desired. This is a moral question of today and of tomorrow. Are we, as a city claiming to care for our residents and taxpayers, prepared to stand down and observe increased homelessness? Are we prepared to answer to national news media that asks why the City of Pittsburgh could not pass an eviction moratorium even as a stopgap measure until the federal relief monies arrive? Is this the reputation this city and you, our City Council, desire to gain in a city once declared one of the most livable? You have a choice. You may stand on the side of greed and avarice, or you may stand on the side of justice and compassion. I ask you to make that choice today. Please show some courage, pass an immediate eviction moratorium. It covers all tenants, no loopholes, no ifs, ands, or buts. Just think, just do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
Jayla Rucker. Jayla Rucker. Okay, next speaker is Jennifer Lines.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Jennifer, and I'm a volunteer with the Pittsburgh Union of Regional Renters, or PERF. My name is Jennifer and I'm a volunteer with the Pittsburgh Union of Regional Renters, or PER for short. I'm here to talk about the upcoming eviction moratorium, or hopefully the upcoming eviction moratorium. Last fall and winter, I made hundreds, if not thousands, of phone calls trying to prevent unjust evictions. I and my fellow volunteers did this because we truly believe housing is a human right, and we recognize that we were the only resource left for many of these tenants. I heard heartbreaking stories of renters who were being kicked out of homes that they lived in for years, of those who had tried to talk to their landlords and got only a hearing notice in reply. I have seen Deb Gross's bill and it is certainly stepping in the right direction, but I am afraid it does not go far enough. In fact, I know it does not. Not only are eviction hearings an exposure point in COVID transmissions, but making them proves a challenge to already struggling tenants. The most haunting case I worked on last winter was of a single father who had to choose between making his court date and taking his young daughter to the doctor. If he did not show to his hearing, he would almost certainly be ruled against and evicted. But his daughter, who was COVID positive, needed care. His story is not unique. If you send tenants to court, you are holding the door wide open to evictions, displacement and ultimately death. Can you stomach that this is what you are doing to your constituents? Often the only thing that I could do for my neighbors was to listen to them, to validate them, a basic dignity that they had been denied. But you can do more than that. You can listen and act. You can protect your citizens, your city and ultimately yourselves. I am proud of my councilwoman for proposing legislation. Now the rest of you must act. Second it, move forward and do something. Because until you do this, the violence and the death will continue. And while I have a moment, to the earlier speaker who talked about the other fifty percent of this equation, I would like to remind you that there's going to be federal relief coming within a few weeks of fifteen months and forward of forward and backward that will be covered. So don't you fret about them one bit. Their money is coming soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Do we need more speed?
Melissa Paternoster. Melissa?
No, she's not here.
Okay. The next speaker is Joy Sable.
Hi there, can you hear me?
I can't, good morning.
Okay, this is Joy Sobel, Point Breeze. I have been in the situation where someone was staying in my place who was definitely someone who you would probably want to classify as the undeserving poor. He was messy, he was abusive, he was unpleasant in many, many ways. And much as I wanted him out of there, I would not displace him at this time. Even if I had no sympathy for him, I would not displace him at this time. Many people have spoken about essentially the deserving poor, and I'm speaking up for the undeserving poor, as they used to be called. It is, for sheer public health reasons as well as moral reasons, inappropriate to put even people who normally very reasonably could be evicted into the eviction pipeline at this point in the history of COVID. We are so close to getting people vaccinated. And yet we are so close to being overtaken by variant strains that will kill not just the undeserving poor, but all of us if they get a chance to perpetuate. We are in the middle of a historically cold and wet winter. Again, it is not a time to displace anybody. We are at a time when people are making decisions between care that will allow their families to bounce back from problematic situations and a straight ticket to death, death. I have no other word for it. People who are put out now, they will die, they will spread death and it will come back to you. There is no reason at the moment to put anybody on the street, no matter how impossible they are. And I want to speak for them as well, despite knowing how miserable it can be to have someone like that in your space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another speaker, please.
The next speaker is Amy Risco. Amy Risco.
No, I don't see her, she's not on.
Bailey Brown.
I didn't see Bailey either.
Okay, next speaker is Shaman Poma.
Bailey Brown here.
Bailey, okay, I apologize, you must just go on.
Hello, good morning to the council. Your friend Bailey Brown here. I am here to call on you, as so many others just have, to enact a full eviction moratorium for the time being, for all of the reasons stated. I am frankly endlessly frustrated that I am having to come here before you, having to go before other municipal councils in the county to beg this of you. It is inhumane to put people out right now. And this because of the failure of Allegheny County and the Fifth Judicial District Court to continue their moratorium. You know, I myself am also a volunteer with PER and while you know, much heartening connection has come of the experience, I would rather not be having to do this. In response to the comments by Mr. Feynman, I am frankly disgusted because as others have stated, there is further relief money already allocated and we are merely approximately, as I understand it, two weeks away from there being a distribution mechanism for those funds, which will be more expedient than the last round that was totally screwed up. Speaking as a recipient, myself a tenant of those funds, and I was extremely lucky to get those funds in the way that PHFA had, was ill-equipped and unfairly saddled by the state to distribute those funds. So hang on, slow down, please. Please enact Councilwoman Gross's bill at a bare minimum. And have a heart. I, I question what, what is our paradigm? Is it just that, you know, we, this is our system and, oh cruel world, sorry? Is that still what we're doing here? Because it's twenty twenty-one, it's too late for that. And that is my comments against eviction. I would also like to support the Crown Act and all of my Black, Brown and Indigenous brothers and sisters. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Shaman Poma.
Grand risings, everyone, can I be heard?
Yes, good morning.
Greetings, grand risings. Aboriginal American people matter. We will not go away, nor will we cease standing up for our peoples and A-level rights. A lie, no matter how many times it's spoken, is still a lie, even if it rings truth, quoted by myself. I am Shaman Poma Chakmamya Halli of the Air Quack Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. Our history has no date. Being the Onkwe Onway in our language, the original people of the earth and the entire Western Hemisphere. First our Incas were invaded by the dark-skinned Spaniards and Carlos Quintos, the dark-skinned Romans, then their Slavs, who would be considered white people or Caucasian, whom were historically the true Slavs or slaves spread throughout barbaria. And then again through Africa, or which is now called Africa. And then through Europe and Asia, and then the Americas, conquering peoples up until now, known as immigrants and citizens of your United States government corporation. The colonizers and eugenics proponents, as they were. While the Department of Municipal Investigations, Aaron Bruni, Detective Avanansky, their legal department, city council in the City of Pittsburgh, has not honored your oaths as it relates to the Constitution and our government-to-government relationship. All have allowed the City of Pittsburgh Police Department to force assimilate and further the paper genocide waged upon our people against the Constitution, treaties and international laws. I pose these questions to you and your mayor, Paduda. Are you all enacting and enforcing an open act of war upon the Aboriginal American people? A federal crime punishable by a million dollars, we care not about fiat currency. We are concerned though about accountability. These egregious acts are also punishable by prison or death. These are laws that you have created and ways and remedies that your government has created. Does the Commonwealth Constitution and the City of Pittsburgh Charter and the Pittsburgh Policies override the United States Constitution? Can the Commonwealth of the City of Pittsburgh Police make laws and policies acting in ultraviary to the United States Constitution? Is a police policy a law? Can police act under the color of law and violate the deprivation of rights under the color of law? Genocide and forced assimilation against the international laws of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People and the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People and the Constitution? Can the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania force assimilate Aboriginal people whom are outside of the jurisdiction of the United States government? Can Pittsburgh Police Department write laws? Is your department's lawyers, are they legislators? Do Pittsburgh Police have jurisdiction over Aboriginal American people? Can a contract one never signed be enforced? And can one be liable for a contract signed by someone other than themselves be enforced? And can one be held liable for a contract they never knew existed at the time or after it was created?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
We're going to wrap back around and the first speaker that we missed was Lindsay Passadellis.
It was the first one.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can now, thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad that you're, we're able to sort it out. And so my name is Lindsay, I am speaking on Rare Disease Day. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to bring this up. The Rare Disease Day is an important day to build awareness for rare diseases and the impact that it has on patients' lives. With rare diseases being so rare, there's a no cure for most of them, little to no treatment options, and many go diagnosed for a long time. So this day aims to educate the general public, as well as educate the, as encourage researchers and decision-makers to address the needs of those living with rare diseases. I myself have CLOF syndrome, which is a rare overgrowth syndrome with complex vascular anomalies, caused by genetic mutation that impacts a small population. So this disease is so new and rare that I didn't know what I had until I was about fourteen years old. There's no cure and there's very little treatment options out there. Over the years, I have seen incredible progress in gaining support and research in order to find treatments for my disease. And a lot of that had to do with supportive funding and spreading awareness, especially on days like Rare Disease Day and CLOF Syndrome Awareness Day, which is August third. However, we do still have a lot of work to do in order to get more research and in order to better improve the quality of lives for those affected. So any support that we can gain in raising awareness on this day and the challenges that come with it can really help us propel forward in advocating for research and development and hopefully start to break down the barriers that we face. So it does mean a lot that you've taken an interest in this day and are able to recognize it and put some efforts toward research and building awareness. So I thank you very much and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this matter.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your work, raising awareness too. Next speaker.
Amy Risco.
Is Amy here?
She was on, so I guess she's having issues again.
Still see her, she's still on.
Okay.
Maybe connect her to audio, I don't know. Amy? If you're on, you have to unmute yourself? No.
Is there a button you press when you call in by phone to unmute?
I, I don't know.
Star six.
Star six.
Star six, thank you, star six. Amy, could you press, wait, she started coming on? Could you try it again, star six? And then Amy, if you, if you press star six, unmute yourself, to unmute yourself. Do we have somebody that they can contact? Do we get her on?
If you press star six or you're, you have it connected through your phone and your computer, you also have to unmute your computer.
Thank you, Erica. Councilwoman Strasburg. Oh, there she goes, okay. Morning, Amy. Good morning.
Oh, good morning, thank you. I am here today to support an eviction ban. Many people have been evicted and are continuing to be evicted and hearings are ongoing. To the attorney's comments earlier regarding the effects of income for our landlords, I think we need to keep in mind that tenants and their families cannot bear the burden of this pandemic. And also keep in mind that when tenants are evicted, they immediately lose their home and their place in the community. As we know, funding is on the way and I think it's a little, I just reject this idea that income is somehow being held as equivalent to the lives of people that are, whose lives are being affected. I am speaking to you as a renter myself, a neighbor and community member. I'm a volunteer with the Pittsburgh Union of Regional Renters, or PER. And I'm also a registered nurse who's been working in the hospitals throughout this pandemic. And I really cannot underestimate, or I cannot, I cannot overstate really the deadly effect this pandemic has had in our community. We are in the midst of it and I assure you and my nursing colleagues would say the same, that people are still becoming ill. They are still being hospitalized, they are still dying from this illness. This council has a duty to stop evictions now. We know that an eviction endangers people's lives, it forces them into the streets, it forces them to shelter, it forces them into crowded housing situations. And I want to keep in mind too, and I, I want to say this very plainly, that there are children's lives. When we see the docket numbers and we see the names, those are the names of the adults on the lease. There are children being evicted and people are more than docket numbers. So there are many things that are not in our control at these uncertain times, but this is one thing that we can control and we need an eviction ban. Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a great day. Do we have any further speakers?
No, that's it.
That's it. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
There being no further speakers, that brings us on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, good morning, Councilman. Councilman Burgess. Madam Clerk.
Looks like we may have lost him, he was on his phone, he said he had to step out at eleven o'clock.
No new papers by the Councilman, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kalkiel, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President, thank you.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Kalkiel presents Bill Number Twelve Twenty, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a First Amendment to the Agreement between the City and Victor Stanley Inc. for litter can monitoring software and hardware components by increasing the total allocation to three hundred eighty thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. Bill Number Twelve Twenty-One, Resolution Granting Unto Twenty-Six Fourteen Smallman Associates LP, Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense to install light fixtures in entry canopy, exterior facade, cladding and a set of existing stairs at two eleven Twenty-Sixth Street, Second Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number Twelve Twenty-Two, Resolution Granting Unto Gala Limited Partnership, Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense to project and signs, a shed style awning and two existing light fixtures at twenty-one twelve Penn Avenue, Second Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number Twelve Twenty-Three, Resolution Granting Unto Penetic LLC, Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense in existing concrete block planter at one ten South Atlantic Avenue in the Eighth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number Twelve Twenty-Four, Resolution Granting Unto Sixteen Wood Street Partners LLC, Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense, a projecting blade sign at 16 Wood Street, Second Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill Number 1225. Resolution providing for any supplemental reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the CBD Signals Project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs thereof not to exceed $2,494,000 reimbursable at 80% and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $12,000 from the previous agreement. Resolution, Bill Number 1226. Resolution amending Resolution 107. Providing for a contract or the use of existing contracts and/or agreements providing for the planning, design, repairs, maintenance, improvements, emergencies, operations, and/or the purchase of materials, equipment and supplies in connection with the production of the complete street design guidelines and associated projects to increase the total not to exceed to $488,971 for payment of work performed by Utah, Inc.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Councilman Coghill, you have a waiver of rules of counsel for Bill Number 1196?
Best motion to waive the rules of counsel on Bill 96.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Madam President.
The bill will appear on. Yes, Councilman.
I'm sorry, maybe I just checked out for a moment there, but I don't see 1196.
God, I don't see 1196.
There's no 1196.
Yeah, I don't see that either.
I have 1196 on my sheet, so I apologize. What is the number, Councilman?
I don't think there. I don't believe there is a waiver of rules under the.
Yeah. Waiver of rules under Councilman Coghill Committee.
Okay, well. That's what my cheat sheet says. Sorry. So I apologize then.
Yeah.
So there's none there?
No. It's under a different committee.
So I have, I have two under two different, under another, I have one under another committee too, on my sheet. So do you know which, which committee that's under, Councilman?
Oh, 1196 is gonna be introduced under.
This final action.
Yeah, that's final action today under Councilman Coghill's committee. So 1196 is up for final action.
So is there any bills up for a waiver for today under Councilman Coghill's?
No, 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 there's no waiver.
Okay.
Apologize for your teaching.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1227. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 3250 Liberty Avenue. Bill Number 1228. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 3213 through 3215 Penn Avenue. Bill Number 1229. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Gupta Butler Street Project. Bill Number 1237. Ordinance amending Title VII Business Licensing. Article 10 Rental of Residential Housing by including new chapter 782 temporary eviction regulation for disease prevention and control due to COVID-19.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I'm gonna motion to waive Rule 8 on Bill 1237, which is the Evictions Moratorium, so that we can discuss it on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman, thank you, Councilman. All in favor?
I wanted to.
Discussion.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it, if I may.
Please.
I just wanted to emphasize that this is legislation that I'm, I'm really grateful for the co-sponsorship of so many council members. I want to see, we've got here on the agenda, Councilman Coghill, Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Wilson, I think Councilman Kraus wanted to add his name as well. And let me know, anyone, if I've missed anyone. There was a lot of emails going back and forth last night. I also want to acknowledge that I had drafted an amendment to our Declaration of Emergency back in January and had shared it with members and with the administration, but that members were uncomfortable. And as for an opinion from the Law Department, who didn't feel it was defensible, even though we know other cities in Pennsylvania have done it. So we went back and forth at length, that I want to acknowledge the work that the, the Law Department and I'm gonna say here tied around, I always called, just called her Director Lindsay Powell, but I think it's Assistant Chief of Staff or something like that, is her proper title. Has, have put in now, four or five weeks, we've been working on this. And so what we have here that we'll discuss tomorrow is an ordinance amendment, but it is tied to our state of emergency. So that it sunsets automatically if council does not, is, does not declare a state of emergency or does not renew a state of emergency. So it really is predicated on this COVID crisis. And as we've heard, you know, we still have people being evicted. And quickly, we have some very high numbers that are people who have already proceeded, landlords have been pursuing them all the way through the process. And even as we speak, they could be put out on the curb. There's just, if their writs of possession could be executed at any minute. And there are dozens of them across the city. The highest districts being District Five reporting 63, again, who could see, you know, be put out today. District Six at 12. My own district, District Seven at 23. And so there's, there's more here in the whereas statements, the recitations that you see. And I want to just point out that during COVID, Allegheny County, I don't have Pittsburgh numbers, but Allegheny County has seen a 240% increase in homeless. And so we know that it is an, an increasing problem at the worst possible moment. And as I said, we'll discuss more later tomorrow, but this body, City Council has already put millions into rental assistance. Last year, we transferred all of the money we got from the federal government straight into assistance. And we know from the URA that they've already assisted a thousand households, which is, you know, a thousand landlords that have gotten cash assistance because of the money City Council has put in. And the URA has kept track of how many of those households had kids. 79% of them, so more than 790 of those households were female-headed households with children in the household. And so I'm hearing the same thing anecdotally from these many volunteers, who I want to acknowledge that they're for coming to public comment. They are trying to help landlords fill out the paperwork for them to receive their cash. And so I, I also implore the landlords out there, when presented with the paperwork, it may be daunting. But if you fill out the paperwork, there is cash that will come for your payment and your, and your tenant can stay in those units. So we are providing the cash end of the situation and what we're trying to do now is prevent the evictions that are either due to an uncooperative landlord or really the, the stories that I'm hearing are people who are in desperate need and seem to be treated unfairly. And, and I, I know from my district that many times it's an attempt to flip a property or change a property. And this is just not the time that we need to, you know, support that kind of activity. So I'm, I'm hoping we, we can present the strongest possible moratorium and close some of these loopholes. And we could talk more about the specific language tomorrow. So thank you for your time. I appreciate that. I just, I thought it was important to respond to some of the comments.
Thank you. And I think that we all have an opportunity to speak tomorrow. So is there anyone else?
Madam President.
Today. Councilman.
Thank you. Yes. And you know, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for, for driving this. We all got the law opinion and it would have been easy for us to say, there is nothing that we can do. This is especially personal to me, you know, growing up in a single family household, watching my mother cry many times, counting the money so we had, you know, so she could pay the rent. And, and I think back how selfish I was thinking, I, I need a new pair of spikes or a new ball or a new mitt, you know, so. Especially when it comes to single family households with mothers with children, you know, it's, it's really tugs at my heartstrings. So. Again, I just want to thank Councilwoman Gross for, for driving this. It's, and it's not just the moratoriums with her, you know, whether it's childcare or affordable housing. I've had many conversations with her on these things and she really truly is a champion for the poor, I would say, and the underserved. So. And, and I know you had help with, you know, Lindsay Powell and some others, and I want to thank them as well, but I don't think we'd be talking about this and, and doing it without Councilwoman Gross's leadership. So just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing that, I'm just going to thank Councilwoman Gross again for her leadership on this. I also want to thank Lindsay Powell as well. She's an amazing person. She's helping. You know, there's a lot of things that the City of Pittsburgh's not responsible for under our jurisdiction, but we're all responsible when it comes time for us to pitch in and do what we need to do to get our constituents and our city through a crisis. And this is one of those times. So she's helped with a lot of things, including feeding people, after school programs. I mean, her work has been really amazing and I, I kudos to the mayor for hiring somebody with such compassion and, and such heart and knowledge and how, knowing how, knowing how to get some of the things done. There's a lot of people over there on his side of the hall that really do a lot of work in that regard. But I also want to thank Dan Gilman in the mayor's office for working with us and understanding that this was important to the city. I think that it was important that he worked together with us and made sure that we were getting something on the table that wouldn't be, that would withstand, that would withstand a court, a court case. But I really do appreciate that Councilwoman Gross brought this to our attention. I think, what, maybe three, four weeks ago was the first time she brought your attention. So I want to thank her for, for her patience and leadership in building the consensus that Councilman Kraus taught us a long time ago, is so important to do ahead of time. And making sure that we're working together to get the five votes. So I want to thank you for your work on this again, Councilwoman. With that said, we'll move on to the next committee. Oh, no, we, we voted.
We did not vote for Rule 8. We so delayed it for tomorrow.
Can we have a motion? We have a second. Can we have the vote, Madam Clerk, or all in favor?
Aye.
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 Bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. The beauty of.
I'm sorry, Madam President, forgive me. Maybe I just missed it. Did we read the remaining bills under Councilwoman Gross's committee? Did I just miss the sewage facilities? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Thank you for making sure we're on track. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1230. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 840. Adopting and approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDVG Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by restoring war memorials to war memorials and public art. Bill Number 1231. Resolution approving a conditional use application under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoned in Article Five, Chapter Nine, Eleven to Luckovich Center, Inc., property owner for authorization to operate a multi-street residential use at 2142 Reitman Street. Zone RMM Multi-Unit Residential Moderate Density District. Fourteenth Ward, Council District Number Five.
Thank you. And we have myself, Chair of Hearings. One communication.
Council President Kel Smith presents Bill Number 1232. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the period ending February 15, 2021.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to red receivin' file?
So moved.
Second? Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And was there any discussion? Okay. Bill, and that's, that's approved. Thank you. And now we move on to our unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, now move on for the reports to committee for final action. All in favor of the, oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Coghill, I'm getting ahead of myself. Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1215. Report of the Committee on Public Works for February 17, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1174. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 797. Adopting and approving the 2018 Capital Budget and the 2018 CDVG Program, the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by reducing East Carson Street by $64,053.38 and increasing ramp in public sidewalk by $64,053.38. Bill Number 1175. Resolution providing for a supplementary agreement with Allegheny County for local costs associated with the Seventh Street Bridge Project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $3,396.91. Bill Number 1176. Resolution providing for a supplementary agreement with Allegheny County for local costs associated with the 10th Street Bridge Project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $98,144.73. Bill Number 1184. Ordinance amending the City Code at four locations within the Chapter 719. Vendors and Peddlers in order to update the City Code to reflect the name change of Duquesne University Arena from the AJ Colombo Center to the Cooper Fieldhouse. Bill Number 1196. Resolution amending Resolution Number 25. Entitled Resolution Vacating a Portion of First Avenue. A 30-foot railway in the First Ward, Sixth Council District. To add specific information to regards to payment in PWSA's lines.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kel Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And it moves on to Councilman Kraus's Committee on Human Resources. Councilman?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 1216. Committee on Human Resources for February 17, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1118. Ordinance amended the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI. Conduct Article V Discrimination, Chapter 651. Definitions to clarify the definition of fair style.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to thank Director Hammond for speaking again today, and I was very persuaded by his testimony last week as well at standing committee and voted no on the rolling back some of the rights and the Crown Act. So I, I appreciate him calling out today. The comments in the Post Gazette as kind of backwards speak in a nineteen-eighty-four Orwellian style. I forget exactly. It's been a long time since I've read that, but it was, I thought, an inversion of what is true and what we heard in testimony from the director that this amendment is reducing rights and reducing populations who are protected and reducing protections, and therefore, as I voted no last week, I'll be voting no today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Seeing nothing from any other members, I just want to say, Councilwoman, I'll be honest with you, I, to this, at this moment, I don't even know how I'm voting, because I heard Jim's testimony, and it, it was compelling to me as well. I'd like to have heard anything to the contrary. Okay, so with that said, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President. No. Six ayes, two noes.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to, and thank you everyone for voting. I know that was difficult for everybody. No. I, I know that we all have a lot of questions about, about the whole thing. Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents bill number twelve seventeen, report of the committee on land use and economic development for February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number ten forty-eight, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances at certain site known as Melon Park, located in Point Breeze, Seventh Ward, Seventh and Fourteenth Wards in the city. The city is the owner of this property, and there has been no objection to the nomination.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Restained.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes, one abstention.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents bill number twelve eighteen, report of the committee on innovation, performance, and asset management for February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eleven eighty-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into an agreement with SciCom Data Systems Inc. for professional services relating to continuing maintenance, support, and upgrades to city law of Department of Law's current legal case management and administrative support software system at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, the, as the words come up on the screen, the, the typing, you know, the, the way they come up and what we're actually saying and what's actually being said. I mean, Councilman Coghill is Mr. Cocktail right now. It may be more appropriate than we know. Can we have a Councilwoman Gross Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs?
I was pointing to the cocktail.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross presents bill number twelve nineteen, report of the committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number eleven seventy-seven, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Achieva Building renovation, twenty-six fourteen Smallman Street. Bill number eleven seventy-eight, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the New Granada Square Apartments, twenty-twenty-three through twenty-thirty-three Center Avenue.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President.
Councilman Coghill.
So, so it's too early in the day for a cocktail, I will say, but I have gotten in trouble for drinking. But, but that's not what I wanted to get to. If I could, I don't know if it's possible to go back to bill ten forty-eight, the historic designation on Melon Park. I had forgotten. I made an exception for that because I felt that was very important. So I abstained. Is that, how's that work, Madam?
Can we come back to that? We'll come back to that in motions and resolutions, Madam President?
Yes.
We'll come back to that, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I can't remember. Is there any other discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That brings us on to motions and resolutions, and I'll read a couple meeting announcements, then we'll get to Councilman Coghill's vote. We have council will meet tomorrow morning, Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, for the standing committees meeting at ten AM. They'll be chaired by Councilman Lavelle. To register to speak, please fill out and sign, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the council meeting webpage by nine AM Wednesday morning. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight by the registration deadlines. Please be advised that tomorrow's post-agenda discussion has been postponed, and a new date will be posted once that has been determined. And that was the post-agenda on, was, Madam President, could you remind me? I think it was Councilman O'Connor's post-agenda?
Yes.
I think it was the AIDS Task Force or something, maybe?
Yes, it was the AIDS Task Force.
It's to make sure people know. Okay. And he will reschedule. He's been very good at scheduling this.
Yes.
And now, do we have anything from members? Councilman Coghill, do you want to go first with your vote?
Sure. I mean, I don't know what I have to do, but I just wanted to change my abstention on ten forty-eight to an aye vote.
So noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Any other members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse the absent members, motion to approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
Moved. Moved.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's adjourned.